Seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regular council meeting for June the 25th to order. First order of business is called for community interest regarding the agenda. There is no cameras today, so I don't believe anybody has anything to share with me. Okay, we'll go on to the agenda. I have a couple of, I have a deletion there, eight point one. The subdivision application has the 2401. Donna, we're going to pull that one for this time.
Yes, Your Worship, we had some information, nothing bad from some of the letters come back from our legal that we just have to add some things to the RFD from a legal perspective and we couldn't get it done in time and we have to think about it. So we'll probably look at calling it special, probably in a week and a half or so on this matter to approve the subdivision so the council have all the information they require.
All right, thank you for that. And then I'd like to add under six point zero, library, we have two representatives for the library who are with us today, so does anybody have any other additions or additions? Get a motion to.
Well, I was just hoping we could get an update at some point on what's going on with the dirt field across the road, but.
Taylor?
The, Your Worship, the county chamber indicated they were coming tonight and then indicated towards the end of this week they were not coming.
Okay, so do you want to put in, you want to talk about it?
There's nothing, if there's no information, then fine, but I mean, this is getting kind of silly.
Well, it's going to sit like that for a while. I asked her.
Thought it's coming as far as I know.
Okay, well, it's also overgrown with weeds and it's going to be really bad within, like, soon, like, it's been a long time, they're dirt and.
It's March 10th of July and they're coming, but as far as.
Can I add it to, to new business you like in eight point four?
Your Worship, I would, I would accept that I have, I have some information from Chamber of Glass Communicate, so I can add a little bit to it.
Okay, so eight point four, Taylor, please. Anything else?
Yes.
I don't know if that should go on the agenda, but I just wanted to say something about the special interest group place, phone in the office, municipal office here. Okay, I don't know anything about that, but Donna, if you.
There's the public commentary.
Public commentary.
Yeah, okay, so when we, when we come to the public commentary there, it'll be under thirteen? Yeah, I don't think it'll be on the agenda. No, you can, you can bring that up when we get to, might have to sit through a few things here, if you don't mind. Oh, nothing as well. Okay. Where are your experiences? All right, thank you. Okay, so then just those three, three changes, then you got a motion to accept government?
I'd like to accept the additions to the agenda.
Thank you, all in favor? That is carried. All right, so four point one, the regular meeting minutes for the 28th, special meeting minutes for June 11th, and the call for June 11th. Are there any error or missing in the number listed in there, one thing forward?
This is the train of my life I've worked here, but I didn't see anything particularly concerning four, unless it was either adopt both.
Okay, motion to adopt them? All right, yeah, thank you, all in favor? All right, so presentation delegation, six point zero, the library, we have two ladies from the library board, if you want to.
Anything, run with him, though?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
That was several more.
So I'd like to apologize for the delay and our accounting software corrupted and I was just, when I was just concluding your end, so things have been a little delayed. All the totals, I, oh, I appear to present the library's 2023 statement of receipts and dispersments for your review and your approval. So you do have them in hand. All the totals are consistent with previous.
Is this it?
Yeah.
But they don't have copies.
Okay. Oh, was I supposed to?
That's okay. I can go quickly.
You can tell us all about it.
Yeah, I have another copy here, too.
I can talk to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hang on.
All right, I'll just take a second here, so what else is happening in the library?
All sorts of exciting. Oh, my goodness, we've had a really busy June, we had a fabulous visit from a knowledge keeper early in the month with some medicine teachings, and we had a huge turnout and it was a spectacular evening, and we're rolling right ahead into our summer evening club, which is going to be awesome. The theme this year is to the stars, and we're going to do everything from bizarre science experiments in the library through sending off rockets outside the library. Having heard Donna's words of caution to watch for horses as the haymaker, we will take that under advisement before we set anything off. But it's going to be a fabulous summer, Wednesday mornings, 10 o'clock to 11:30. The kids can come and have a story and activities and a snack and lots and lots of fun with fabulous prizes at the end of the hall. And we've already started to think about September and some lovely, we've got a really neat seniors program coming up involving diamond painting, that Tamile Lindo is willing to do yet another painting adventure, and it's just, it's, we have, in the first four months of this year, we had more new memberships than in all of last year put together, so the library is a buzzin'. And that's thanks to Paula, she's been doing an instructional talk.
Well, thank you very much for the kind words.
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
This is mine. So books, used books, you accept them there?
We do, now, there are some criteria that Yellowhead has given us for the books that we should be adding to our collection. We gratefully accept all donations of used books because the books that don't get added to our collection will go into the book sale in October, which adds money into the library's coffers for buying more books. So it's a win-win-win, really, the books get used.
I, I dropped off some the other day.
Yes, very much appreciated.
I just didn't know, nobody was there at the moment, so I just kind of left them there and just wondered if that was appropriate.
Oh, yeah, very, very much so, and much appreciated. Aubrey Watson gave them to us, Aubrey Brussels went through them because she manages the adult fiction acquisitions and found the ones that would actually add to the collection as it stands, and the rest will be enjoyed in the book sale.
Can you touch on the staff, just to inform everybody where the different nationalities in the community?
I wish I had this, we have.
Not the details, not the details, just the general where it comes from.
We have, we have an Environix, the Yellowhead libraries have provided us with an analysis of Thor'sby put together by Environix that is extremely current, and we have all sorts of, like, Thor'sby is a far more diverse community than you actually imagine, we have a wealth of nationals, but the library door with its languages on it reflects the communities of origins for a whole lot of the people in Thor'sby and in the surrounding area. For example, I was just doing a little bit of looking around our Indigenous History Month, I guess, I have to really think about the labels we put on the different things, and also National Indigenous Peoples' Day, and it's 9% of Thor'sby can claim Indigenous heritage, and, and so, you know, that's just one group, and there's also, we have Filipinos, we have people from a variety of Asian communities, it's a really neat place. If you want me to talk more about what, I cannot, I'm forbidden to share the report as the report, but if you want me to talk about any of this one in that report, I would be happy to come to council and give you some more information on it because it's fascinating and a lovely resource for our community. Thank you.
Take that into consideration. So I think everybody's got a copy here, Donna, do you, do you want to go through just the highlights, or?
Sure, sure, if, we want to go on to page three. So our opening cash on hand, the total was $45,161.89. And then during that year, 2003, our cash receipts were $78,429.15. And so the total cash counted for 123 with 59104. I don't know if you want me to go through, cash dispersments stay really consistent at Our books, of course, $5,260.14 for the year. Our total administrative costs were $6,436,6, $6,436.16. So our, our total dispersments for the year, $59,832.4. And then, as you can see below, we have our cash on hand at the end of the year.
It's pretty straightforward, does anybody have any questions they want to bring forward? Does anyone have? So you're looking for, I agree, Donna, you'll have to, you'll sign this, right?
I guess, Your Worship, the library wants to present the council as statements, our CFO will be looking through it and then I'll sign it off later.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion for a must-lose.
One thing that I've consistently brought up, both here and when I was on the library board, is it never adequately reflects that the municipality is actually incurring the cost of rent as well for the building, for the space.
I have no idea how, how do we do that, because I think that is an important, important.
There's a, yeah, there's a very significant contribution from the municipality to the, to the library that is never accurately shown.
Okay, we'll look into that. I don't know about our account.
Been many, many years I've been bringing it up, so.
Well, what you could do, what you could do is show an income from the municipality and then on and off.
That's always been my suggestion.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I feel like it's still, I've said it before, I'm saying again, I feel like it still should be shown, however everyone wants to do it, it should be reflected.
Yeah.
So just, just a note to a financial paper, is it?
Well, yeah, well, even you just show it as a revenue, like, so where it says transfer from municipality.
Increase that number according to what an appropriate.
Increase that number, and then you have to show an expense for rent to make all of each other.
Yeah, on line 59, you put a number according to what the space would be worth and then increase the revenue side according to your company.
We have, I don't have a number, but we have to figure out what some space we have would talk to. Yeah, that would find out versus what.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't need to be a exact amazingly accurate number, I mean.
Yeah, because I was just going to say, where does it come from? Yeah, well, I mean, whatever, at least, like.
It's going to bounce to zero anyway.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, if it's, if it's revenue neutral on both sides, which is more adequately reflects the actual cost and it makes it a more viable picture for everyone and makes it frankly easier and more justifiable for a grant perspective when things are actively reflected in that way.
Yeah, no, it's a very good point. Yeah, so we will talk to them, yeah.
Do you want to make a, a motion to, effectively?
Well, I can, I can, I can make a suggestion that everyone maybe look into that, but the library board operates entirely autonomously, these are their financials, I have no discretion over this, I can't provide direction for anything about it, to be honest.
I mean, I can come up with a number and then. Yeah, we would be happy, I think it's a very responsible suggestion because, again, we don't exist in a vacuum.
Well, it's happy, and it's, yeah.
And, yeah, happy to do that, just not sure how to go about it, but with your help, I mean, we can come up with it.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the.
Yes.
Financial review with the.
We can accept for information, you don't approve for them, though, like, we, we don't legally approve these finances, we can accept them for information is what all we can do with them.
Yeah, which is what you have to do.
Your Worship, you'd accept them for information and it's my job to sign them off, so the CEO signature, the information, the CEO signature.
I can make that motion.
All in favor? Thank you very much, ladies, and, yeah, that's, we can do that, we'll actually bring that up. Okay, um, six point one, April, all the way, I'll see you. April here, is anybody here to represent her or anything? No, okay, you want to go through that?
Your Worship, I think, I mean, council's had a read of it, we can't really make a decision, I mean, she hasn't come here to present, the administration is holding fast, we are not forgiving apparently at all. We've had legal opinion and you've read that in the RFD with respect to once you take title of a home and just let it use and how the service has become yours.
Right.
Whether you're using it or not, and the water is shut off to the property, as per the last owner, has not been deemed to be shut off, but you still have to pay for the service, garbage, sewer, and so on and so forth.
You, okay, so you're going to contact her or relay this to her, or what are you?
We have relayed this to her many times, we've said, so of course she indicated that, that she wished to come in and speak to council, so administration's going to hold fast and keep building.
Okay, now, when, when there's a dispute, do you not, like, any families, do you just hold families or?
No, no, penalty there too, of course. Yeah, yeah, because it's, it's a service that everyone pays for, even, even if you go away for the winter, you still have to pay a minimum, a minimum fee, so consulting legal and benchmarking about eight different municipalities were not aligned and our bylaw was reviewed by legal competent solid and sound. So we will hold the line with this, if she chooses to come back in, we can redirect this.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't understand where the confusion is, and frankly, waiving things like this impose a cost on residents, and I don't, I don't know why I as a resident should be paying someone else's expenses just because they don't feel like.
I think the confusion starts with her.
So you want a motion, any motion for this?
I move to table it.
Yes, thank you. All right, all in favor? Great, six point two, Thor'sby District Open and Thor'sby Society Request for Funds to Have Part A. Please step forward. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Your Worship and council, for taking this opportunity from your busy schedule to meet with us. I'd like to introduce some of the people at changing this meeting, we have our president, Martha Sheets, our treasurer who handles the money, my wife, Marlene Kovluk, one of the volunteer members, very active in our society, it's Phyllis Maduke, and myself, Sam Kovluk. We handed out a brochure of information that is required when we have a council meeting to present what's happening at the, I'm going to call it the community hall, because we all know what the community hall is. Now, over the last eight years, a committee was struck, sort of, and prior to that, and I know Counselor Corey Gilberg was on that, where we tried to save the hall, we tried to retain, we tried to boot it up, we tried to do all sorts of things because the hall was in disarray. They did a tremendous job, but as time went on, some of the members left the community, so a new group sort of got together, and presently we have about 15 members who are active and about 20 subsidiary volunteers who always help us in bingles, et cetera. Now, over the last eight years, if you turn to, say, to the second page there, is a list of things that we have spent money on in the hall, and if we, time related at the bottom, today, there's approximately $170,000 that we as a society have raised through grants, donations from the town of Thor'sby for helping us offset some of our utility costs, and thank you very much for that. And we are now in the process of trying to do more into the hall to make it look more appealing for people to rent, we are going to put ourselves into the, kind of like a wedding planner process, where we have a community hall with our prices, et cetera, to advertise our facility. There are a few things right now that we are presently doing in that hall, some of you have been in the hall, you know what we've done, it looks fantastic, and that is only about one-third of where we want to go. Presently, we are renovating the upstairs, I'll call it the upstairs, which is where the dance area is, the upstairs bar area, and that is being handled already, he's halfway through, he's doing cupboards, he's doing tabletops, all sorts of things, paint, light, ceiling tiles, et cetera. So that is quoted at roughly $11,707. And the kitchen, which is our major item that we've tried to sort of look at for the last eight years since we started our committee, the kitchen needs an upgrade. We have gone out to different people with the same itinerary as to what we wanted, and we looked at a local gentleman in this area, it's called John Ray's Creation, that was Chris Berhan, Danny Berhan's son, who's into construction, cabinetry, finishing houses, et cetera. So with the kitchen, we are going to be putting in one more oven and a stove top with six burners, there's going to be a grill set in there, all new cupboards with stainless steel tops, there'll also be some more cupboards put in there for storage, backsplashes, the lights in there already have been done in the past, so we don't have to do that, so a quoted amount of roughly $56,000. Now, so that's being done as we speak. Okay, we still need to do something downstairs in the kitchen area, just before the buffet table, there is a lino on the floor, and sort of the kitchen area flooring, we haven't looked at that yet because we feel very strongly that, and the carpenter also feels strongly that those tiles are asbestos-based, and if they are asbestos-based, the price of putting in new flooring in that area just shoots sky high. So we don't have a quote for that, really, per se. Oh, yes, we do, sir, it's quoted at $26,000 if there is asbestos, there isn't asbestos in there, it's going to be a little less. Front lobby, that is when you walk in, we want to put wains, put them all the way around, sort of beautify it a bit, quote of $10,815. We looked at putting stage curtains on, the front of the stage, one time there was stage curtains there and we priced that out from a supplier, obviously Duke, they're about $1,000. We're looking at the stage wall, sort of paint them to make them more presentable, no quote yet. We would like to replace the air conditioning unit that's on the roof of the building, and yes, there is air conditioning in there, way back they put some in their bills when you were, I think, the mayor at the time, there is an air conditioning bonnet at the roof, we talked to Jay Plumbing out of Devon, and he says, A, you might have to replace it, or B, you just might have to recharge it, but we don't know anything about that, but that should be done. And total project there with everything, including the kitchen cupboards, the bar areas, looking at around $113,000. We have the $67,000 that we can work on the kitchen and the bar area, we're ready to go for that, we're ready to pay for that. So we presently would like to know if we could get some sort of support from the town to the tune of around $46,000, if we can. Now, some of the grants we've applied for, we've gotten, obviously you've heard about the big grant that we got through the End of Camp Association, we got that big grant at $70,000 approximately, we also got grants for the lights through Fortis, we also got some other grants, et cetera, but we, as volunteers in the community, sometimes don't know where these grants exist, how to write them up, and who to go to, because we're not paid staff, so we just do it on a hunch, but here if someone doing it, we apply, we go for it, sometimes we're too late, sometimes we're successful, and we get it. That hall, if we can do all of these things, will be one of the nicest halls in this area. There's a gentle, a gentle lady coming in from Wizard Lake slash.
Oh, from Lake?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Tanmore.
Tanmore, she phoned us and wanted to look at the hall, she says, we're living out of the Wizard Lake area, blah, 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 she came to the hall, she could not believe the facility, the space outside it for parking, what we have to offer, and the price, the price was fantastic for her, she booked it right on the spot. So when we put our name out into this wedding planner kind of Alberta book, and we start advertising, we would like to have that hall finished, because if you do one thing today, wait another 10 years, do something else, wait another 10 years, do something else, all of a sudden what you did 20 years ago is old and it's falling apart. But we've tried to keep that hall going to the best ability that we can, and as you notice on this change here, with all the things that we've done, starting from Eve Dross all the way down, and this was within the eight-year period. So how are we financing most of our stuff? Well, we're doing bingles, we're Tascun, and we're doing bingles in Rapid Bingo in Lydook, we're doing things like the Malanca, the Oktoberfest, we do weddings, we do funerals, we do all sorts of different things, we do 50/50s, and we try to raise money, trade shows, et cetera, for, for the hall. I, when I look at this, I want to commend those people that started this whole project way back, you know, Dan Colfer and his wife, Corey Gilbert, and his group of people, and the list goes on and on, I think former counselors, et cetera, that helped. But that's gone, we are now taking over, and before you know it, this group will eventually say, well, we're getting on age and we're going to have to let this go, some of us are getting quite old, I mean, and I know Phyllis just had a birthday the other day, so she's up there, and we're all getting there. Yes, we have young volunteers, but a lot of the young volunteers are volunteers for work, a lot of them don't like to take the initial step of being the leader of a function or doing that part of the program. So with, if we could get somewhere in the area of $46,000, I'm not saying today, tomorrow, but within the next year, year and a half, it could be budgeted, we could get that thing in shipshape condition.
I guess that's my question, when, when, are you looking for this, what is the timing for you to start all of these renovations?
Well, we started the kitchen, we started the bar, that's the goal, it'll be done within, end of September, that part will be done in the September. The rest, all we can do is as we get money, we're going to start putting, within this year, we hope to get something done by January, we'd like to get it done by January, if we can. Cindy, you have your question, like, they come up, we've already done our budgets for the year.
Yeah.
Understandable, and, you know, it's, I don't know where you would find the money. First of all, like I say, this, this year, the budget's already been approved, and, and I mean, $46,000, I think that's.
That's a 3% tax increase.
I was just going to say, Corey?
Well, frankly, there, there is every year, just general grant money that is at the discretion of the board to budget, plan, allocate as they see fit, and that was always the intent, like, I have a lease right here in front of me, that, that's always been the intent, was that the board would not be charged a lease, they don't pay any money, it's a, it's a zero-dollar lease, for the reason of, hey, any money that you guys can generate, grants you can bring in, revenue you can, can create, is able to be put back in the hall, that, that always was the, the idea, so I mean, I understand that it's, can look like it's out of line, oh, you're raising a bunch of money and then it's all going into the hall, but that always frankly was the explicit intent since back in 2014, that was, that was the purpose of the agreement since day one.
Okay, and then just, one question, let's just say that the all boards have were done. Let's just say that the whole boards had were done. Turn everything over to whoever, I'm not sure who owns it. Probably the town, I think. No?
It would presumably revert right back to where it was in 2014.
Which is?
The rec department presumably renting it.
We're not saying yes or no, Scott.
No, I understand, and I understand, I understand. We, nobody in that organization makes any money. Every cent, every dollar we get from you, every dollar we get from the municipality, AGLC, whatever, it all goes back into the hall.
And I guess my question, and I said this to you when you came in that day, was, A, how long have you known when you were gonna do this? Because, B, our budget is done for the year. And if you want it done by January, like, there's no way we're gonna have the funds by January. I mean, we don't even have enough in reserve for the hall to give you...
My question. I understand, I understand, but once we started going now with this, you know, the kitchen and that, and this looks so good and that looks so great, and people are coming again and saying, yeah, that's so good, let's do more, let's do more. It's always been in the back of our minds, eight years ago when we first started, painting, lights, kitchen, you know, everything. Flooring, all that stuff we have done in the past. So when this hall ceases to function as a society, it will be turned back to the community as your hall. And every improvement that we as a group put in will be yours as an asset.
Corey?
Well, I guess, kind of a two-fold thing. I guess, A, you're missing probably about eighteen thousand dollars worth of stuff from 2015. So your number actually shouldn't be a hundred and sixty-nine, it should be a lot closer to a hundred and ninety thousand. But I guess that's my point, that's from 2015 to now, that's been a very long period of time that, call it two hundred thousand, has been put into the building. To say, well, let's just throw, like, there was never any contemplation of throwing a hundred grand at it in a single year. That was never something that was...
That's correct.
Gonna be deemed reasonable or viable from my perspective, being the person physically wrote the lease. Just to say, that would have been incomprehensible, to be in fact that.
So I mean, what I'm hearing, what I think is that, you know, we'll certainly look into it, but I mean, we can't commit to anything at the present. You know, we'll look at, you know, maybe, maybe perhaps administration can see if there may be some grants, maybe it can...
Yeah, because there's four thousand for the hall.
That's it? What do we, that, Corey?
Because there explicitly doesn't need to, there isn't supposed to be money in reserve for the hall because it is, it is not owned or administered. Right, owned, managed, not administered, for a five, so that's why that number is so...
And I guess, in your point before, is that they don't pay rent in lieu of doing improvements.
Plus get a annual grant to help kind of make sure things can be obtained.
So you guys are a historical society. Thorbyan District Cultural as a...
Right, okay.
Yeah, the district of the nonprofit society.
You know, like, I hear all the time about the agricultural society getting tons and tons of grants. I mean, Warburg just got a huge grant for their, because they ran it through the agricultural society.
So, but in saying for them, they have their arena, the curling ring, they have a hall under the ag society.
Our hall, I mean, have a lease though, Sam, like that lease makes you in control of it. For all intents and purposes, it is your building until you decide you don't want it anymore. So no, you don't have to deed to it, but for grant purposes, you have a valid lease for the building.
So are you saying to us here now that we could go to the ag society and say to the ag society?
I don't know, I don't think so, Sam, but, but I mean, originally...
You mean, you know none of this legal stuff?
Well, it's all a fine line, I'm quite sure, but I mean, originally, you look at how our complex was created. It was built by the agricultural society, I think that we got the two hundred thousand. And, 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 see, Donna, I think you've been talking a little bit with, with people over at the horse thing, and you may have, do you have any comment on this here that you'd like to share with us?
Your worship and council, what typically happens is, I don't know what happened in Thorby, but typically an agricultural society in a small town does have things like the curling rigs, the arenas, the town hall. And ag societies, there's no more ag society, society papers given up by the provincial government anymore. Whatever ag societies are here in Alberta, are state, they stay in Alberta. Ag societies come with huge grants. And in fact, we've been doing a little researching for the Haymaker Center, that's helped a little bit. There's two and three, four hundred thousand dollar grants for infrastructure that I haven't had a chance to talk about, but I do yet. So ag societies come with very powerful grant opportunities. But the, whatever happened here, I don't know, but the only...
It's not an ag society yet, it's registered just as a, under the societies act, just as a nonprofit society.
Yeah, that's right. So the Haymaker Society is, is kind of like for those grants. The Adirnaw can't because you're not part of that ag society. Now, I haven't researched any grants for the Adirnaw society, but there's a lot of cultural grants. But we, sometimes we probably have to designate that hall as a sort of historical building. And I've researched, you know, I have...
You're very careful with that because you're required with what you're doing, like, you wouldn't be allowed to do anything you're doing if you don't do it historically.
They tell you what you can do and what you can't do. So there's, there's a caveat to it, but a lot of these colleagues made the mistake of, let's just say made the mistake, a lot of communities, smart small communities, kept all of other buildings under the ag society with the profit that they recognized.
I'm sorry, I just, I always, just look in some ways, so I think...
So in saying that, we know we can't do that, that door's closed. Let's look at something that we can open up.
Yep.
Let's see if we can get some different types of grants, you can let us know so we can work with you to apply for. You have always supported us when we applied for grants, and it's a support letter. But one time there was a book where you could look at, and there was like five thousand applications for loans, for grants, for this and that and everything else. We don't know that. I'm not sure if you guys do, you have secretaries and financial advisors?
Yeah, surely, I have like four grants I have right here, I can, I can sit down and walk through with you, but they're usually not as easily attainable by us as they are by you as a separate society. So they're, like, that's part of the reason why things are the way they are, that you guys have a lease, it's your building, because you actually can apply for grants with much greater...
Okay, the CFE, right?
Yep, and we apply for the CFE, yes. Absolutely, large stream or small stream, whichever you prefer. Small stream's up to a hundred and twenty-five grand, large stream's up to nothing. Just gotta get all your, all your ducks in a row, you can apply either, if you want, I can help you do it.
And then I just, when looking, because before you apply for grants, because I'm sure you have to get financial, I can get them. I can't get them to balance. The expenses don't add up, when you add up this line, see, it doesn't add up, is it not?
Oh, that's just...
Well, it depends, if the AGLC account expenses are included, it's... If I include the AGLC account expenses at the bottom, you're out twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-six. If I don't include them, you're at twelve hundred and three dollars. The income adds up, but the expense don't add up, so I don't know. I took that out, I didn't think I was that, yeah. So just because if you're gonna apply for a grant, you probably need to have...
You have to fix that up one way or another. Okay, so I guess, you know, for a must then, we'll accept it as for information and direct the administration to see if there's anything they can find for it.
Your worship, if I may, the council, Corey, does credit you with, and the certain society indicated... As indicated, they can apply for the CFE.
That's probably the easiest and most obvious one.
It's easy to get, because your lease is unique with the historical society building, as the council, Corey, indicated. Really, that lease is written so that it looks like you own the building. So it's a good grant to apply. And I would, I would shoot them in the mouth.
I'm very obviously aware of the nuances and details of why things are structured the way they are anyhow, and when, for what purpose. Like, no problem saying now and going through and, we can, you would pick a day this week, next week, whatever day you want, I can help you. We'll submit the application this week if we have all the information for votes.
All right, thank you.
And it is very admirable of what you've done and accomplished up the hall, and the town really does appreciate what you have done. And we look forward to seeing you.
Yeah, we're getting burnt out, that's bottom line. Oh, you've probably already heard that we did get a financial, I guess, a lottery from a young gentleman who used to live in this community. He's one of those books, because he gave it to us in two thousand and twenty-four. He is basically supporting the renovation of the kitchen. Or a check, there it is. So if we know somebody else in the community that's interested in doing stuff like that, we'll write the letter. I mean, that's, it's in the way that you guys heard about it.
Yeah, no, and, and...
Not gonna mention any names or how much it is.
Thank you for bringing it forward to us, and we will accept it for information, and as Corey said, that, you know, if he's willing to...
Not a problem at all.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Did you have anything, maybe?
Oh, I'd just like to say that, you know, it has been very, very many volunteer hours and love have gone into that building, and it is showing that we have one person who does a lot of the homework, that's important.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
We appreciate it.
Just hope she doesn't burn out, that's all. Or Angela, it's really...
How many tickets you need for a gold dress?
It's really a good time.
I had the table last year, and we're still talking about it, it's coming up, it's coming up.
So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, can I get a motion to accept that for information? On favor? Thank you.
Do you know that?
Yeah, it is quite unique, you're absolutely right, and accurate. All right, Old Business, seven point one, proclamations for Q3. Is everybody had a chance to look at them? Is there any other ones that you'd like to put in there? That's it, great, Donald?
Yes, your worship, these are the proclamations that council has with the organization meeting.
Motions accept those dates?
I'll make that motion.
On favor? Let's carry. Okay, New Business, we will go to eight point two, GN Commercial Tax, it's out of West.
Yeah, there's nothing on, meaning subdivision? Sorry, your worship, sidebar.
Yeah, okay, and that's it, let's see, can you add that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so, sorry, sidebar, your worship and council. So basically GN Development, of course, is letting, we'll be applying for subdivision for the land that the new building is on, part from the center, part from the other side. And that's, that's what we pulled from the agenda tonight, because we have to, we have to add some more things in according to legal, which just came up, and so forth. So that's fine. In discussing with, with our legal counsel, before GN decided to apply for subdivision, the tax incentive would have applied to all three lots, or of the one lot, right, of the entire lot. But because it applied for subdivision, the tax incentive would only be applicable for the lot the building's on. And it's an incentive for him to sell, when he sells the other two lots, they would get the tax incentive, because the third lot is pending sale, and that would be a commercial STR. So they would get the tax incentive because a new building's coming and so on and so forth. So our, our legal counsel indicated that this would only, only work for the lot he has now, like where that building is on. Now, what we have to do is, we have to apply it, what, as a subdivision authority approves the subdivision, then we would apply it to that main lot. So we're bringing it to you ahead of time tonight. We're indicating that our legal counsel has indicated, like we believed it would, that it would apply to its first lot with the three bays on it. Once subdivision is approved, the other two parts of the land would apply for it based on their ownership, not on GN's ownership. So we're looking tonight for a resolution to basically table it until the subdivision is approved, noting that once subdivision is approved, this exemption for GN would apply to the lot, lot and plan of the three bay dwelling.
And that, that's in reference to the one that we pulled there, the subdivision, right?
That is correct. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So what we wanted, your worship and council, is just this on the book.
Yep.
And it's in the, in the, in the council understanding, so that you have it in the background for when you approve or request questions or whatever from the subdivision application. It's, the subdivision application is a little tricky only because it's a railroad, it's not impossible, it's not encircable. We're, we're not that, that way yet, and we believe that, we have to do some work with our land use bylaw, but we believe we can have discretionary use for that area with, with council brought protest that our planner has lower discretion when he's come up along those lands. So we're bringing this to your attention, and I can talk in circles here, but we're not. We'll bring this to your attention knowing that administration is very well aware that this would apply when subdivision is, if subdivision is accomplished, the main parcel where his three bays, this would only apply to that for GN concerns.
Because taxes are due at the end of the month, and he will not have it approved, he'll have to pay the whole amount, refund him? Just so we can let him?
That's correct. We would, we would issue a refund, like we have before another property.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure so that we...
I just have to go back and try to clarify, I didn't get a chance to. I don't even know what the heck our, our construction incentives are, and why don't we change that, a whole bunch there? What do we even do now?
These are the new ones here in the RFC, the fifty percent exemptions for year one, twenty-five for two, and fifty for three.
Isn't that what it always was? Didn't we change much stuff?
It was like a hundred and a hundred and...
For residential, it was, for commercial, I thought, okay, so we killed residential altogether? For commercial, I thought it was always this.
No.
Okay.
We lowered it.
He was upset that this was how it is now.
Okay, I, I thought this is what it always was, which is what confused me, because I was thinking, well, I thought we changed it.
Yeah, we did, we lowered it.
Okay.
We lowered it. So, and he, and he does qualify because he's still to do three bay commercial work. So this would apply to lot one eight, block, I see a type of work, block one, plan five, five, four, zero, seven, not the three bay.
So, all right. So how would you like this motion to read then?
Just the motion that, that, that this goes, how can I word this? That they pay it at full, and then...
Well, the default assumption is that they pay it, there's no motion to the contrary.
All I wanna do is, I'm thinking of the right wording, to tie this to, this comes after the subdivision is approved or not approved, right?
Well, I mean, so I'm saying you just need to table it, no matter what they, it should be tabled until after, yeah. I moved to table this discussion, eight point two, until subsequent to the subdivision approval.
Administration's happy with that, they can consider it.
And just to let you know, Corey, it was a hundred, a hundred fifty, fifty, twenty, thirty.
Okay, like, I thought that's what it was, more or less for residential, but then I thought it was less for commercial, I don't know. And then I know there was like the renovation versus new, so maybe that's where I was getting confused. Because I knew I didn't know what it was, I just didn't have the time to actually go back and check, so.
That's what we're here for, council. All right, that's what we're here for, council.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, next one on the item eight point three, uh, A B M, U N E S conference, Alberta Municipalities Conference, September twenty fifth, twenty seventh. And, uh, I guess it's, uh, looking to send some people or whatever, first of all, I guess, maybe, what do we got left in the budget?
Well, not much. Corey kind of seconded all of that. And it won't have Corey's, um, because I just did it today.
Yeah, I sent it, yeah, yesterday, so.
First of all, well, I know, I, I can't make it.
Tracy and I were interested in going.
Because, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a turn this year.
John, I can't get it to you.
What's the last one that we'll be participating in, swelling?
I guess, first of all, I guess you guys.
Well, at least those that aren't running again.
So.
Your worship, I'm just texting our planner to let her know.
That's specifically just for the, like, it's all different areas that we have a budget to.
Well, so conference fees, you still have, um, about twenty eight hundred dollars, but as far as mileage and assistance, which means that's your hotel and stuff, like, there was nine hundred and forty-two, and I think we're going to be over anyways, just with all these.
Yeah, my bill is more than that, just for that.
Well, your bill was fourteen hundred, just for the hotel.
Yeah.
I just hope.
And that was like by half.
I think my eyes popped out of my head.
When I first started looking, the high, oh, sixteen hundred, oh, for a room per night.
Yeah, so, and then your mileage was eight hundred, no.
I don't remember how to calculate it.
I could probably get us free accommodations, I might have those two bedrooms, one bathroom to share.
But, yeah, so for like, as far as, like, miles, it's pretty much, it's going to be full, because, again, that's all the means for.
Well, that'll get kind of pulled out at some point, but.
Yeah, but, like, we don't know when.
Sure.
Right? So, yeah.
I guess if a resolution, if you're moving to the G L, or if you want to send the conference, you have to, uh, have a resolution to move.
I think conference.
Conferences, if it's the council, I guess, if it's the legislative training, or the under training is the conferences, what if it's the legislative?
Yeah, so if the mileage and assistance, um, G L, that's going to be type, which is your hotels and the council.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, then, Trump, of course, if you have to put money from one G L into another.
Then, yes, of course, you can motion either way, but just, yeah, for all of our clarity, I mean, what training do we do as council that isn't a conference, right, that is the?
Like, I think you'd be okay for fees, it's just, it's your hotel and the council.
You just can't run a G L into deficit, so therefore, it can be just a transfer.
With, uh, A U M A, there isn't really anything other than just took our heels and everything, pre-while.
Yeah, it's just the mileage really.
And mileage is closer.
If we can stay.
Yeah, if you're fine with that, I'm, I'm very certain we can.
Yeah, you already had mentioned that. Because that, you'd take, that twenty-five hundred train would pay for the, per D M, or?
Well, you'd have to move it then, that twenty-five hundred.
It's a training, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And presumably, we can travel to that.
Well, yeah, and that obviously cuts a lot of.
They can stand each other for an hour.
And like you say, I, I would like to go, but I can't go, and Corey, when is your, uh, interested in going?
Uh, yeah, anybody's way better than S C M, say, at least, but, uh, it would, I mean, if there's any, if there's any need to go, if there's any money to go, I'm happy to go, I have no, like, imperative need to go, though.
Yeah.
And are we, are we a member, or are we non?
Yeah.
We are, so we're an Alberta municipality's member.
What else?
Yeah, we pay fees, yeah.
So it'd be six hundred and forty dollars, question mark?
Yeah.
So the conference fees, like, that's not the problem.
And can you move conference fees into other areas to help cover that, or not?
Or you have to.
Yeah. Okay. That's really going to be it for the rest of the year, probably, isn't it? Other than your guys.
Yeah, there won't be, interesting.
Violence for D M. Because you're going to have to move money to cover their stuff anyways.
Well, well, it depends, well, yeah.
Well, until it all gets settled, right?
Well, it's a question.
I'd like you to look at the accommodations first, and then we can.
And you can make a decision, when do you have to move it or not?
I don't, the early bird starts this month, and I don't know when it ends, I'll look at that.
Sometimes it's nice to wait a little bit to see what, what they're going to do, sometimes it's a little bit more valuable than others.
Last year, they didn't get it out to us till, like, weeks before.
That's not normal.
Because we were like, I kept saying to Tracy, do you see any sessions? Do you know what's going on? Like, what's going on?
It's usually a lot sooner than that, and then it's a lot easier to make a decision as to whether it's particularly important or, or not for one reason or another.
Oh, maybe like a week, couple months, that will have all that.
So you don't want to bring it back? You want to bring it back to the July one, and then you can tell her.
For all of it.
Okay, so we're going to make a motion to that thing?
I keep moving to table things, someone else.
I can make that motion.
And that's what it's going to look like.
All in favor? That's carried. All right.
Yeah, every time I put it in my hand, it's table something, it's going to look like that.
I don't want to deal with it.
All right, uh, bylaws and policy, nine point one, the reserve policy, G O B O three, twenty-four R, we will have, what this, uh, move on, you would like to discuss that, please?
Uh, thank you, your worship, we really haven't made any changes, we've re, we've renamed it to stay within our numbering policy, so we've renumbered it from G O B O three, uh, G O, sorry, G O B twenty-four R one to G O B O three twenty-four R, and the R stands for reserve, so we can delineate between the financial policy. Um, I think, I think CFO Cindy made a few small changes, I think, was it the interest?
No, I didn't make any changes in the policy, we just discussed at length the interest stuff, and did some research, and the M G A does not currently specify any requirements relating to reserve fund, so it's, um, this includes the establishment, that includes the establishment accumulation and management of them, there's, the guidelines establish your policy, so you guys established what have, what the reserve amount of what you're doing, but the M G A does not have any requirement. They suggest them because it's fiscal management, but they don't require.
So if we just, like, like I said, I was making the recording, if we have to still, like, if every monthly, you had a bank statement, have to say, move this.
Yeah.
A little bit of interest into the, but we can just have, by policy, have that automatically happen, like.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that was, I guess, my concern last time.
Yeah, so that's why.
It complicates it for us, so.
Yeah, no, I, so that's why I went through, I'm like, this has to, has to be a way, and so if we declare the, the reserve interest bearing, then the interest that is earned by those funds is automatically transferred there, and then I would reflect that in the budget.
Yeah.
So then, whatever we budget for interest, for the, for reserve, it'll go into the reserve.
Okay, that's, well, that's, that solves that, and, you know, because I just don't want to create like this weird, these weird motions all the time.
That's what you've done on three point six, in the green, right?
Yeah, that's like the interest calculation, so then, um, in talking with Deodono, we talked about establishing which reserve would be interest bearing beginning in twenty twenty-five, because obviously, we didn't budget in twenty twenty-four for those funds to go into reserve. Um, so then, the discussion would then be, and we don't have to have that time, we can have it another night, but, um, which reserve would be interest bearing, and which wouldn't be, which reserves we still want, that's why I included the statement of reserve, so that you guys could look at which ones we had, and, because there's some that I think maybe, I don't understand why we have them, or what their purpose is.
Well, some, yeah, there might be a backstory to some that you.
Yeah, that I don't know, so, um, so, yeah, so that's kind of the next step, if you want to approve the policy, then we would move to declaring which ones are interest bearing for twenty twenty-five, and then review the reserves and decide which ones we want to keep. If we want them all to be interest bearing, or just some to be interest bearing, or.
Want to keep discussing, they want to, you're looking forward to it.
Well, whatever they want to do.
Anybody want to figure that?
Well, I don't think we want to, like, change around the reserves now, that's just for later, but just to approve the policy.
This is the form of, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed eight point four, the theater park. So, if not, after now, we'll come back to this one.
We added it.
Uh, we're already doing this, like, I guess, that's fine, I did that with my big concern, I just don't want to have such weird, kind of redundant motions, trying to make sure we're following our own policies, but if that actually is the case, then I'm happy to, uh, to move to approve the policy with G O B zero three twenty-four R.
All right, yeah, all in favor? That is carried.
And then, uh, your worship of council, we'll bring back the schedule of reserve at budget time, and you can allocate which reserves you want for interest.
And if we want to.
I'm sure a lot of it is combined, if nothing else, but, yeah, I mean, most of them, there, there's a few here, I know there's backstories that you were probably wildly not aware of.
No, they're quite interesting.
Yeah, I'm sure there's, there's, yeah, there's, yeah, it'd be a long, long discussion.
No, that's good, I like discussing, good. So we'll go back to the theater park, then, I guess.
Okay, uh, thank you, your worship. So, uh, Chamber informed me Friday that they were not coming to the meeting, which, okay, that's fine. Uh, they had asked me for, um, indications of when the cement would be fixed, getting a quote from Bracken Brothers out of a town, because they're the only ones we trust, really, for that fifty-two feet of sidewalk to fix it, they're doing a good job, waiting for the quote, but I indicated to the Chamber, don't wait on the sod, or the fixing of sidewalk, because you're not going to hurt it. They weren't putting down the sod, because they want sidewalk down first. So I said, no, I, you know, you have to adjust that, so however that's going to be, it's going to be, I, I said, I can't guarantee you that sidewalk's going to be fixed, it'll be fixed sometime.
It's a budget for that.
Yeah, never mind, yeah, no, we would have left it if we had, so, but I don't know the Bracken schedule, right?
Well, and I don't know, like, I've never heard it from here, but they're the ones who keep telling me that there's a big remediation that needs to get done with that sidewalk, why are they so confident that it's ready to get done, because they keep telling me when to dig it up again?
I checked with respect to the remediation of the tank.
I'm pretty, like I say, I've never heard from anybody who actually knows that it needs to get dug up again, they keep telling me that they know it needs to get dug up, so I'm not sure what they know.
The Chamber?
Yes.
No, the, the, I sent the, the report on to environmental remediation specialist, who knows, they, they quite frankly said, multiple of tanks were underneath the sidewalk at the street of the property, we would do a test if we ever dug up the street.
As far as I knew, but, like I say, I keep being told otherwise.
No.
By other people, so, okay.
Yeah, I know, there was no other contract signed for mediation, there was no contract signed from Clean Harbor.
And there's nothing that needs to be.
Nope.
Done at this point.
Nope, they were dug out, uh, like, we, we also have the file where we have the proof of where those tanks were in nineteen thirty-four, twenty-four, wherever it was, they were right on the street, and, and, uh, so because they were, the sidewalk was disrupted, and the street was disrupted, that is public, uh, public, um, public property, I guess, we'll say it that way, the tanks were dug out, they were, the dirt was removed, it was filled, the rocks, it was lined, so forth, if we dig up the street, we'll have to do a test. Done.
Yeah, I don't know, like, I just, yeah, I, I keep being told that we have to dig that all up again for some reason that I can't understand.
No, I indicate, no, and I.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and I, I know that rumor's going around, and I indicated to the Chamber that, uh, the sidewalk would be fixed, that's all I said.
Okay.
Sidewalk would be replaced, that's all I said.
And I know for a fact, I, I don't know if there's contracts, and, and there's nothing, nothing signed, and.
No, and we have two monitoring spots anyway in town, one is the, one is the town office, so if we were to dig up that street, we would have those monitoring sites.
Already, yeah.
They're already here, so we're essentially not going to worry about it, but I indicated to the Chamber, I don't know why you're waiting for sod, because.
Well, it's already grown over with weeds, it's going, give it another week or two, like, give it a decent rain, that's going to be nothing but.
Well, they're going to have to put in some topsoil in there, because there's no fill in there, and they were worried about disrupting the sidewalk, I said, just, just don't, just don't, uh, butt it up right against the sidewalk, and you can only gather a bruiser, and all the cement is done.
I don't know, like I say, at this point, like, they have to, I mean, it's a lot of weeds, they have to get rid of the weeds at this point, before they go down sod, or it's going to grow.
The sad part is, it, okay, so this is the last week of school, so summer's here, so you're going to miss out on the two months, June, July, or July, August, which is your next summer months, and, uh, to use theater park, and you won't be using it, you know?
And I don't know how they're going to water it, I have no idea, I'm not, it's very remote view.
There is concern with the watering, uh, they had contacted the fire department, uh, to water, and the fire department had said, no problem, and then Ledge County Fire Department said, it is a problem, so, yes, they do have concerns about how they're going to water the sod, and they are hoping that, uh, we can kick in somehow, somewhere, with watering the sod.
I don't know what else. What?
I hear, I hear you saying, Council Tracy, um, if, if, I've been staying quiet with them, because they want to inform me, that's fine with me, uh, they wanted to tear it all up, but they could have overseeded it, quite frankly.
Well, and it's nice when people ask before they do something, that they need help and participation, and make these arrangements before, it's kind of too late.
Yeah, the, the sod should have been in when it was raining, it'd have been fine, it's not.
So they report the pads, Donna?
Uh, they have to report the pads, you have to, Council showing, they, the one pad that's against our cement, they, they have to be redidged up, where they put the posts in, I indicated to Chamber, they're going to have to pay for that, we're not paying for that, that piece of cement, they have to pay for that, but, um, uh, I would have thought that would be in their nineteen or twenty thousand dollar contingency to water, and I'm not being, I'm not being a jerk, I'm just saying, I would have thought that would have been in that seventeen thousand contingency, airbag budget, so, I don't know.
All I say, all I know that I see of dirt, the other thing I have the most complaints about, or of anything in town lately, is why is that still just dirt and overgrown with weeds?
Yeah, yeah. Well, if work comes to work, I can issue an order.
Well, because she told me that we are pouring the pads for the picnic tables in Thor hopefully this week, this was May twenty eighth, and waiting for the concrete to cure, and picnic, to picnic tables to be delivered, once the tables are in, sod, girders, and everything except Thor will be done within days, so she said by the end of the month, which is next week.
Right.
But plans changed?
Okay, but I don't know anything, and I keep getting asked nothing.
Obviously, you know more than we do.
Yeah, I keep getting asked, like, daily, at least, like, usually multiple times a day, I get asked about this.
But we, like, I don't know, in my opinion, we shouldn't have to ask, we should.
They should be coming in, updating them, yeah.
That is correct, and they've been invited in quite a few times.
And they keep saying they're coming, and then they.
And they don't, so, so, I'll be honest, they didn't want to climb to help with water, no, it should have been in their contingency, like, how do they expect us to help with water, in all honesty, and I just ask you a question, if they want our contractor to water them, they have no idea how much water it's going to take to water it up, confident in that, when they could have overseeded that with great seeds from, uh, the Epsom Station on thirty-nine, that, that brings the seed from where it used, where it counts, Council Jonathan, means that they're on, could have seeded it overseas, and been mowing it three or four times by now, because it would have caused, but the other problem, they're going to haul in loan, if you notice, it's lower than the sidewalk, you can't, and that's it's supposed to be for the side, I don't know.
Clay, they're in them, clay, they're in them.
It is, yeah, it's my plastic clay that I keep harping about, so they're going to have to bring in loan, now, could we help them with the loan? Yes, we have enough of that, but I don't know if that's in their, in their landscape, so, just being realistic, not harsh, um, that sod should have been in probably a month and a half, month ago.
Well, that was my thought, I was surprised when I saw it coming out, and thought, well, that's fine, I guess, as long as they get the sod in right away, it'll be okay.
They want the tables put there before they put the sod in.
But I don't understa-
Tough.
I don't understand that, because the, the tables are on a cement pad, though, right? It won't be just here playing sod down.
Depending on how they're putting the table on, maybe, I don't know.
Well, if they have to carry them, so be it, but.
Yeah, she, they said the rest will be sod, but we don't want to put it in and wreck it until the tables are delivered, they're about four weeks away.
I think they're coming mid-July.
Oh, because now, as the tables are coming mid-July, and they're not doing sod until after the table.
Like, it's already overgoing with weeds, if you give it like another week, we're gonna have to dig it all up again.
Well, they said it was weeds, it wasn't even grass, what we pulled it.
It for sure is nothing but, there's definitely no grass there now, and it's definitely looking pretty green.
Well, as I can see, they're overseeing it, it would've, it would've germinated in the heartbeat of the weeds.
I agree, like, it was, yes, I agree there was a lot of weeds in there, but there was, there was grass there, and it could've been dealt with, like, this is truly just weeds now, and a lot of them, it seems bad.
And they could've been seeding it when it was in the rain, just a little half seed, right? There you go, in the rain.
Like, I honestly, I think by the end of the week, it's like, start digging again, or like, I, I mean, I don't know how harsh a herbicide the person, what, just dirt spraying, but like
It has, even, like, in house, both
Like, what you're opposed to, yeah.
May, my last update was May twenty-eighth, Tracy, when she said the tables are about four weeks away, which would be this week.
Yeah, my last update with her was Friday, just, but I had no update on the tables or anything, Council.
Yeah, I don't, like I say, I wanted to ask, 'cause I keep getting asked, so at least I can say I asked, but, I don't know.
Okay, all right, well, yes, we'll see what happens, that's for this weekend.
Well, with Council, I mean, Counsel Tracy's left a query on the table about watering. I, as an administration, I'm saying no, because we've got enough to do, but I guess we'll Council's hearing on that, because we're, we're gonna, they're gonna have to pay for our watering contractor, and that's gonna be a daily thing, so.
Well, my thing is, it's the logistics and planning, it is summer, it is a busy season for public works, and there has been no opportunity for us to plan what, Henry's supposed to just reorchestrate his entire schedule for the whole summer now? He had no foresight, no foreknowledge, was never asked, he has no preparations in place. Why would he be able to accommodate that just out of nowhere? That's a daily thing for quite a while. At this point, it's, now we're into the hot months of summer with little rain, it is gonna be, like, a half-time job, it's maybe a point five full-time equivalent for somebody for the rest of the summer, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Why would we have that available in the spur of the moment?
We don't. I'm not prepared to spring it even.
Well, and even our contractor.
I think, I think they're better off to go and talk to Matt at Tall Pine and see if they can get him, you know, he's Chamber member, maybe they can talk to him.
Yeah, is he gonna put her a sprinkler or something, I don't know, but I
Exactly, and, you know, help him with his water bill, I think that's what I would do. I would talk to Matt there, and
Yeah.
Yeah, for us to go suddenly reorchestrate all public works seems crazy.
No, I can't justify that. But if, yeah, that, and then the chamber pays his water bill, you know? Yeah. And then the council, I think, well. Okay, but I don't, I don't have a problem, Counsel Tracy, with, uh, they need some loan, we have enough at the raw water pond.
Well, and that's a quick drop-off to loan, that's, that's a couple hours for somebody, that's different than saying, hey, connect to somebody for most of the summer, half of their days.
Yeah, that's right.
At a cost, or?
No, we could, no, we're sorry. We could, we could bring the, we could bring the loader down if they have a truck.
When is your next training?
Tonight, right now. Here I am. 'Cause I skipped out on last meeting, so I thought I'd be able to get out tonight.
No, if, if they have a truck, you just have to, no, if you bring the log cat down, sorry, with the skid steer.
Yeah, it's Kleenex and Crescent wrench and all the rest, we get it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. Uh, so we could, we could load it.
Hydro, is that what you said?
Well, yeah, that's what Andrew was saying.
I listen to the
So, I mean, I have no problem helping with that, I mean, we, the loan, if anybody wanted to loan right now, we could help that, quite frankly. Um, uh, Dr. Williams, someone's gonna give a bunch to fill holes in the Williams camp, so I just didn't know we could help them. That would be our suggestion, is find a water search and show the business, pay the bill, and, uh, we're happy to supply the loan.
Do you want a motion to add?
Uh, I would, yes, your worship, if I would, I'll just, uh, think of it. Yeah, in this circumstance, yes, I would like a motion, please. Just directing us to
They wanna make a motion to direct administration to, um, talk to the council, uh, Chamber, I guess, about, um, watering and about
Yeah, send a communication with respect to watering and loan delivery, and loan support.
You'll do that? Okay.
Favor?
Thank you.
All right, um, administration, various points, eleven point one.
Well, it's looking a little better this month.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm gonna say last time, I was wrong, I was just, uh, zooming out, yeah.
Um, but if I look at expenses, we're like below the percentage for This month, June was big month, two, four, um, adventures came out in another, or, and then school.
Is it easy or not for you to, like, add, like, the, where we historically would be as a percentage? 'Cause I mean, it's, like, insurance or whatever, it's like seasonal kind of one-up fills?
Oh, like, do you want me to
Some things
Previous year percentage where we were, or?
Yeah, like something that, how we, like, spend its budget, like, like, what is the historical, like, last year or whatever, just the, what, what percentage would we exceed, expecting, 'cause it's not a pure, kind of, twelve-month split for a lot of things.
That's not consistent. So do you want, okay, so I have percent of budget, and then do you want percent of budget twenty twenty-three, like, where we were last year at this time?
Yeah, essentially, yeah, like, year-to-date kind of percentage, like, typical, like, yeah, for last year, it's been happening.
Yeah, I can put in last year.
If it's easy to do, that's sometimes helpful. Like I say, like, get an insurance bill that's, you know, six, seven figures or whatever, like, somewhere six figures, it's like, oh, so, okay, well, that's, of course, gonna be really low on an expense, because we haven't got that bill yet, or whatever, so.
So, oh, do you want, like, the
Just where, 'cause like, when
Where we were last year at this time percentage was? At the end of May. Okay, yeah, I can do that, I'll do that.
Yeah, for like, 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 last month, we're like, oh, well, our, our revenue was absolutely abysmal, 'cause of course it is, 'cause of course tax bills haven't went out. And yes, I knew that, but if there's something that you don't know, that's not so obvious, it's always nice to
Yeah, so, okay, so I'll just add another column, that's twenty twenty-three percentage of budget. Is that what you want?
Yeah, like, year-to-date percentage?
Yeah, yeah, like, twenty twenty-three percentage, as of the same period.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that, yes.
It would be helpful.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more call. I cannot afford, it's gonna get, the page is gonna get smaller and smaller. The writing will get, then there is, then there is.
We'll call the last one, or your last one, you can.
That's what I do, I hit the plus button on my face.
That's what I say, I hit, so it makes you up for me.
Don't work on this.
Oh, yeah? And Cindy, can you remind me what coverage and things basically?
Uh, yeah. So there's the cemetery, there's, uh, um, the lion's campground, flowers.
Guys, watch the baton, are you dunking?
No.
I watch sometimes, yeah, we do.
Well, just the water, you're looking, I know about the taste of the water.
Oh, I've seen it on the front, I think. It's, it's too, it's too busy.
Well, with all the rain now, like, it's, now the rivers running
The river's pretty high.
And the, uh, trails, the bit of big contentious thing, of the way this was. Wait, you get someone with their dog, within the grasses that have to hear, where do we go, there's no trails anymore. What happens?
We don't, oh.
Um, yeah. There's the discussion, people said they're volunteers.
So, basically, the lion's park, and then, uh, treeing and trail development, and, and flowers.
So, and, or trail development.
Well, well, we budgeted twenty-five hundred, but that could be for trees to be taken down.
No, we're gonna take trees down, there's a land, uh, the rough land, there's gonna sail, so. No, that's gonna sail, it's up for sale, sorry.
Are we
Oh, no, it hasn't been
Are we maintaining the trails that are on our land? Trails, uh, yeah, well, what I would wonder about.
Well, we're, we're not mowing them, no, uh, we, we have to do a bunch of fire smart stuff with them. This summer, we get the summer students, so it's either take down trees and clean that up, or mow, now mowing. Like, in other words, you have to have a mower going there and mowing the trails, right? That was happening before, you have to, mow. I don't mean a little garden mower, yeah, we're mowing. We've got a budget to take down trees, and make it safe to do some fire smart stuff. Um, with the land being sold on, uh, the youth check land, uh, those trails will be closed. Once, uh, once that closes on the Fourth of July, um, I'll be, you know. And then if they say no, that closes off the rough land, people.
Are there people living in the trails?
On the rough land, there's a squatter, yeah.
Often, yeah.
Private property.
Are they living? Or I thought it was kids.
A little bit of both.
I've heard people are living.
Honestly, like, there's, I don't know if there's ever been a single year, we don't have, like, a little tent village somewhere on the trails.
It's up to the rest of police, they're typically aware, but, um
That's just kind of common, that's kind of expected.
There's nothing on our, so, uh, but we do have, we do have fire smart tree issues with trees. And the lions have been, uh, doing some clearing, uh, but we have trees to take down, cemetery too, we have two crash, and three big sprouts have to come down from the rock, so that
See, that one is leaning almost up, it's not the one we're talking about.
There's, there's three in the center there toward their back, one has fallen all the way into the stockyard.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah, so anyways, uh, we've got a pretty good quota of about twenty-three, two hundred, maybe left, twenty-one or twenty-two hundred to take them all down. But those center sprouts are probably gonna have to come down too eventually, because they're, they're, they're seventy, eighty years old, right? And they're rotten.
One by the gate, there's, there's like a ninety degrees.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
How many do you have to take out?
Well, there's, uh, four big ones for sure, they all have to be, you know, they have to have a bucket truck in there to come down, that's the big problem.
I had a husband in Warburg, I had, like, a whole crap load of, uh, trees, pine trees, and I got pine beetles, and they were like stupid tall, like ridiculous, like nineteen fifties old pine trees. And I had him take down probably twelve of them, and he was like eight hundred bucks, he was the most reasonable tree guy I've ever seen. I definitely have his number somewhere if he do want it, but he was like a fraction of any other tree guy I could find back then, so.
Okay, fair ball, five trees to take down, so we
Well, okay.
Yeah, so we
But if you're able to fall them versus having to cut them down, like, again Yeah, I know this was, again, in-town developed, you had to cut them from the top down and six feet at a time.
We've got trees to take down in the trails, too. Well, they have it, but now that it's raining, they probably might, so, uh, I have a meeting with Tyler after the long weekend, uh, interim chief Tyler. And, uh, we'll talk about that. There are chinked up things.
Okay, anything else on the arrangements, or any other questions? Well, and the motion tractor, any questions in there? I have one on the motion tractor. So the assessment training for Ken and myself, am I supposed to do this or something?
No, we will, your worship, it's just, you can't be trained till next year, so
Oh, okay.
You're fine, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll send you and Ken both an email.
I think they do in, like, November, don't they?
Yeah. It's just a review work.
Okay, yeah, like, yeah, I kind of thought so, but Like, I feel like they offer the, the course every, like, November, December.
Right.
So we're, we're completed, uh, in the, uh, the community's, uh, citizens on patrol.
Yeah.
Now, if you can, uh, on motion twenty-four, two twenty-three, if you can, uh, say instead of communities on patrol, uh, citizens on patrol, that's what's formal there. Um, but anyway, that's pending, we're gonna wait for the lion's club to come back, which is fine. And the other one in progress is to negotiate with the CITCO, we have negotiated with the CITCO, at least, they just have to come back to us, it's assignment. So, we haven't affected a champion here.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I have a motion to accept eleven point one and eleven point two? I'll make a motion to take this to eleven point one and eleven point two. On, on favor? Okay, and then the last one, before we get into the public area, twelve point one correspondence, federal funding to help municipal adapt to climate. So, uh, we've got a lease from Mr. Soroka. And I don't know, uh, it are, is there anything we can do?
Well, uh, your worship, uh, we can apply for grants to cover up to sixty percent of costs. That's, that's a couple, and after the shovel-ready fire breaks, artificial wetlands, of course, the beauty of this, our reviews are artificial wetlands, they meant to that. Uh, urban tree planting, um, uh, we're gonna look at, uh, some trees in, uh, in the spring, and to look at trees of our, of forest, older, uh, rather. So, I'm not, uh, desirous, I'll say it, using our funds for our climate ready planet project, climate resilience, asset management, all that, I'm not, uh, too concerned about that, or financing adaptation, so, uh, leveraged by Canadian, uh, to finance climate change adoption and capital, capital projects. And I don't think we need to have, uh, them come and train us. So, I think we can do partner grants, but I think more for information at this point.
Yeah, honestly, like, I literally had a, like, a couple other conversations with them at FCM, and I know it's mostly me saying, this is the most onerous, ridiculous program ever, and I don't know why anyone would waste their money trying
The only thing that started me when they said, sure, five hundred, five hundred and thirty million dollars, that's what
The problem is, like, it's, it's, they want you to spend a lot of money to come up with ideas and reports of how you're gonna spend a lot of money, and then do another report on how you were then going to justify spending that money after the fact. It's a lot of money, five hundred and thirty million dollars with a report, if you spend a lot of money on doing the project that comes along with the five hundred and thirty million of reports. It, it's honestly a very backwards, silly grant that's kind of, you know, putting the curse for the horse, and a lot of just ridiculous paper burden that's beyond comprehensible.
I mean, when you think about it, not even half a page.
Yeah, that's right. And, and there's climate change, uh, grants to fill about our orange
That's what I'm saying, like, it's a paper burden that's a lot of, like, there's actual reporting requirements, and the, the, the metrics they want you to document in detail, or like, just so asinine that I don't understand how anybody is subscribing to this.
Well, and if I look at, your worship, at Cal, uh, Calvary's in serious trouble right now, because they spent eighty-seven point five million, million, on a climate change, right? Yeah, eighty-seven point five million on a climate change program that they can't use.
But that's essentially what this grant is for, it's, we're coming up with a big giant report, it's, hey, let's spend a lot of money on reports.
Yeah, that's right, and, and there's no point in doing that.
No, it's, it's crazy.
And Calvary has a forty-two billion dollar surplus, they should be moving it to other things. So, I, I will say this, just as a conversation or a comment, please. Um, if climate change is being argued appropriately through science, with, uh, all of this taken into consideration, instead of transfer of wealth, transfer of credit, I think, uh, we would, we would be looking and taking things seriously, but it's not right now at this point. And until there's, uh, scientists that can debate appropriately, and it, uh, we're not exchanging carbon, or we're not flying our jets all over the place and, and keeping the world poor, and, and, here's the truth. When you have paleontological scientists digging up cores in Antarctica, ice that's millions of years old, believing that, uh, the earth hasn't warmed up all that much, if, you know, it's warmed up appropriately. So, like it or not, uh, there's no, there's no balance in the science. If, if you don't agree with these guys, you're a climate denier. And the governments are getting people who spend vast amounts of money, small municipalities, vast amounts of money, on things that, um, uh, we need more important things. So, and, and again, as I said to the council before, if you look who gets the credits on solar panels, it's whoever you got the free solar panels from gets the carbon credits and the money from the federal government. And, uh, what's, what's the point? And, uh, there was a big hailstorm in Texas, uh, last week, they have, I think it's five or six hundred acres of solar panels, three quarters of them were damaged, inoperable. So, it's just, it's interesting to, to
Yeah, this grant is for primarily just for doing studies, but it's not actually, if you actually wanna do some work, this is not the grant you're talking, what are you gonna win?
We got a drilling well, and dug enough and found a core.
All right, I get a motion to accept that correspondence? I'll make a motion. Favor? All right, then, back in there, waiting patiently. Very, after all the time, it's the hogging, everything. Well, after the hogs, they'll watch first sod after. By the time they put the horns in, and all the liners for all the concrete, and everything else, they'll dig up all your sod. Yeah. That's what's stupid, put sod in, first, and then do concrete. Just an opinion.
Yeah.
My other opinion is, both the flags that we fly on our municipal offices, I'm in agreement with other communities that are coming down now and saying that those three should be the ones that are blown on municipality, alone, or government, and municipality oriented. And I don't think we should be promoting any other group, doesn't matter who they are, whether it's Pride, or whether they're Palestinians, or Hezbollah, or Hamas, or Black Lives Matter, you can go on and on, you know, white supremacists, whatever. You did not need another flag supporting anybody in front of the municipality, because there's somebody in the group, or somebody in the town who's offended. And I can go through any group, and there's certain things that, their promotional agendas, let's say, that they do, with kids, some everywhere else, that I am totally against, and it offends me in the first place that we're even doing that, so. Unless town council has a bulldog or something like that, I don't think anything, or any of these groups should be allowed to fly flags in front of municipal offices, messes. It's my opinion, but I'm sure if it was stated, that others said that's a way a lot of other people feel, and I don't wanna get pigeonholed, like. Donna said as a denier or anything in any particular group, in that way, because, well, I kind of feel each to his own. So what, what are we got up front there right now?
Uh, June is the pride flag month.
It's almost over.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, it'll come down thirty to June. Uh, you do two things, uh, when, when, uh, Ukrainian war was going on, of course, provincial government wanted to fly the Ukrainian flag, but there's municipalities now that are saying with the flag, those municipalities are saying yes to whatever. Uh, if, uh, if council only wants certain reflections Uh, if, uh, if council only wants certain reflections, uh, in front of their town hall building, then they have to, they would have to pass a motion. You have to do some research, RP, you have to pass a motion or, or allow and enlist the specialties or flags that, that.
Well, I, I, I agree, I mean, Corey, go ahead.
I feel like we already do that, we approve quarterly, we just did approve the different proclamations that we make as council for different, different things, different, different interests, different groups throughout the different quarters of the year. Uh, and we make those proclamations in support of different causes, interest groups, purposes. And if there's a flag that correlates to any of those proclamations, as far as I'm concerned, we by default have approved it as council. And I don't represent any one individual in Dorisby, I represent everyone in Dorisby. And I don't care if one person's offended that I represent everyone else, I represent everyone else and I have no problem supporting any cause. If there's a single member of the community that is a member of that group, I want to support them.
So, so just going back to our, our proclamations that we did tonight, um, you know, I looked on there and I mean, we've got lemonade standard day, so I don't think they've got a flag.
They'll build one.
Yeah, what?
They'll build one, they'll make one.
Uh, firefighters' national memorial day, all the firefighters might have a flag, I don't know.
And if we flew that outside, I wouldn't be offended.
I would neither.
I consider our council of having already approved it by virtue of we approved this, this proclamation.
Yeah, Alberta Association of Agricultural Society's day, and I'm sure they wouldn't have any, Alberta Police and Peace Offices' memorial day, you might have a flag sign. Yeah, that's not against any group. And then the last one that we approved was the National Truth and Recidu- Reciduation. And, uh, I don't know exactly what that even could entail, to be honest with you.
Nobody knows. So Corey's probably there, he's, uh, any one person being offended, there's a hundred or eight, or whatever. Uh, just, let me finish, that everybody's entitled to their own opinions too. And just one or two council members deciding that it's okay for this group or that group to fly a flag out there, it's everybody's office here in the town. It's for everybody. And so I don't think anybody, any special interest groups and assets who have their own promotions or agendas or whatever like that, just to have banners or posters or painted things here and there, that none of that should be a part of what the town accepts. Yep, back to you.
It's not about whether some, there's one person's offended, if there's somebody who is a member of any minority group, any racialized group, any, anyone feels not part of the community, I want them to be a part of the community. I want them to feel accepted, welcomed, embraced. I don't want them to have to feel any, any concern of any animosity of being part of this community. If they're hearing that it's inappropriate or acceptable for a flag to be out front, how welcome does that make someone feel in our community? That's not the image of Dorisby, I want to train.
Their promotional material doesn't make them accepted into community or not accepted.
What promotional material, from what group are you referring to?
Any of them, they all have it, they all have it, Corey. They all have one or another.
I never associated a flag with a proclamation. Like to me, a proclamation is a declaration that we put in the paper on a poster.
Yeah, but if we're supporting, yeah, if we're supporting that event or that group, or then why would we not?
Support that group.
Yeah, exactly.
I would think that the flag should be neutral. On, on the municipal building.
Well, that's what everybody wishes, I guess, like, I mean, right now, we, we.
It is up to you, I don't know.
Yeah, no, no.
My opinion, you know, I'm not against any group in that particular.
Well, I know exactly what you're saying, though, but I mean, there, there, there are certain circumstances, that's just okay. With, with right now, if you put a Palestinian's flag up there, you know, Jews ain't going to be very happy and vice versa, right? So now, how can you promote either one?
Well, we haven't.
No, we haven't, no.
It's just these three hung on the exterior, there would be no question.
We've, we've, we've limited to what we have, and I think that's exactly what we do.
That's what I'm saying, it's just following in line with the other communities that are starting to voice, where we should be not.
So in other words, if, if somebody comes in with a flag here, we have to decide at the council.
Put it up outside their building, if you don't agree.
Or we should. I think we inherently did decide by, by your mission and proclamation, it's not an arbitrary whim of administration. We actively made a motion in support of that proclamation already. So all we're doing is, all administration was doing is making good on the proclamation that we actually did approve and vote on.
But does a proclamation mean having a flag?
The proclamation is going to, it is going to say that we are supporting and encouraging whatever that particular thing was, there's a list of them, so it's hard to say.
There's different ways of supporting.
Okay, well, my point is this is not a crazy thing to say, that, that's an overstep at all, I don't feel like, if you're supporting, I think that's not an overstep.
I agree, we've already made the resolution, so I mean.
I agree.
My point, shouldn't be an issue, but thank you for, you know.
Yeah, that's my opinion and probably other people's too, that, or I know other people that wouldn't show up here and voice it. But, uh.
I don't know what's happened to some of the other communities.
Honestly, if you're in favor of, you want to support it that way with promotional items like that, then fly it in front of your house, hang it from your window, whatever, but not on the town hall.
Thank you.
And nobody should vandalize it or do anything like that. I don't mean that either, no one should tear it down from your property or anybody else, does there have any offense from, from, which is shouldn't be part of the municipalities.
Just being respectful, like people thought an Oilers' flag should have been hung in every community, but should it or shouldn't it be?
Yeah, the media tried to pigeonhole them to the.
Did you have anything else you wanted to discuss?
Nope, not for me. Just saw it first, after you.
Thank you very much, first one, uh, yes, and what Corey told me that is we're going to handle it, so. All right, well, I have nothing else here, I guess, yeah.
I'm just curious as to, shouldn't every meeting we do an update of what's going on on that front? With the land and the legal and that kind of stuff in regards to.
Oh.
Like, because we know everything and you guys are doing.
You can, I'm bound here, we could have something in camera, but I mean, why don't we make a motion to.
Well, because I didn't see anything, because I didn't get into the agenda. I just assumed that you're going to always continue.
Probably another, probably.
Make a motion to take a five minute recess and go in camera and then we can do it up there, that's just as easy as.
Yeah, you guys want to do that?
Uh, can I make?
Motion for a day for recess.
Okay, and then do I just say to do an in camera after the recess, okay?
Okay.
Just set it.